Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's 7:00 PM. And welcome to the City of Shenandoah City Council Meeting for October 26, 2022. I look around and I see that we have an excuse absence, Councilman Fletcher. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd like to remain standing, we're going to have a short invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Wild, will you provide the invocation for us, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we praise you for this day that you've given us. We praise you for the weather that you've given us. Father, I praise you for your creation and your sovereignty over our lives. Tonight, Father, I ask that you would be with the city council as they make decisions which affect everyone in the city of Shenandoah. Give them your wisdom and your knowledge as we move through the agenda tonight. Also, lift the staff to you, Father. Watch over them, protect them, and give them your wisdom and knowledge as well. As we leave this place tonight, Father, I ask for protection. As we go home, bring us back safely for the council meeting in November. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Wild. All right, moving on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. First, we have Charlie Ballmer.
Good evening, Council. Charlie Ballmer, 214 Hickory Ridge. Since I missed the last meeting, I'd like to start out with a huge congratulations to the Shenandoah Police Department for National Night Out. It was a huge success. I can't tell you how many compliments we got that night and how fantastic everybody thought the event was. Next, I'd also like to give a huge shout out to our Convention and Visitors Bureau folks, John Meader and David Kulture. I've been seeing a ton of advertisements for our city on different social media, so that is a huge opportunity for our restaurants, businesses, hotels in our city. Finally, on a little more serious note, I recently read an online article that has been shared across the most common Shenandoah Facebook groups. It referenced the board appointment process in Shenandoah. The title and tone suggested a negative connotation for the process as a whole, and when outlining some of the details, it referenced a little-known ordinance and went on to name only one person, the then mayor, and the establishment of that ordinance. The details piqued my interest, honestly mostly because I've been to enough council meetings to know that it's not the mayor that votes and approves these kinds of things. So I did some further research to make sure I had all of the information, which ended up with me doing an open records request for the council minutes around when ordinance O-13028 came to be. So I'd like to share purely some of the facts of additional information so that our residents may be in the know. The ordinance is actually focused on the entire application process, titled Ordinance Requiring Application and Screening and Term Limits Appointment to the PNZ, MDD, Municipal Court Judge and Prosecutor, and other city committees. The ordinance, Section 105, allows for an application to be available to the mayor and any member of city council for review, and the city council has to approve any of the appointments. City council discussed it on October 23, 2013 meeting, and it was requested to be tabled so that it could have additional discussion and process formalized. The ordinance was added as Item 6, Discussion and Possible Action on the November 13, 2013 council meeting. Council members Jason Fraser, Gary Henson, Darrell Frazier, and Jean T. were present and voted unanimously to approve the ordinance. The new ordinance provided a well-thought-out formal process for our city. During the next city council meeting, after the ordinance was passed, December 13, 2013, council was able to use it for the first time to unanimously adopt a resolution to appoint a resident to the MDD Board of Directors. I purposely left out any opinion, and I'm only sharing additional facts for clarity on what the ordinance is about, that it was not formed in haste but rather discussed by council, and that that ordinance was not created by a small, specific group of people that are still in office, and that it was intended to maintain power and control in our city. My final thought is just an opinion, though. I applaud each and every one of you for representing our city exactly as the ordinance and process that others created for our city. I'm truly thankful to have all of you as our readers. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, Janet Huston.
Good evening, Council. I would like to ask questions and get information on the agenda item about annexation and the upcoming public hearing, but that silence indicates the information and the data that are out there to discuss. What I would ask is that, just as we're having a block party for a very specific, small section of our city, could we have a town hall to discuss the very critical and crucial issue of annexation? Could we take this information out to the public, which is actually the city of Shenandoah, and could we have a conversation about what annexation is, why we're doing it now? Have we owned that land for years? Does the public, without having to go to the Montgomery County Clerk's office, do they know exactly where that land is? We do, because we went and looked it up, but there's not information in the agenda packet that people would readily understand. What I would just ask you to consider tonight is a conversation, and just having a town hall so people could come, and if you wanted to ask people to submit their questions in advance, you could do that. It's not really about who sits in these chairs. It's not the chairs in which you sit, but it actually who sits on the throne of your heart and how you want to communicate with us in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. All right, next speaker is Esther Lum.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Number Nine tonight, which is the proposed closure of a city street for a block party in the Silverwood Ranch neighborhood, which consists of about 80 homes. Last spring, this same group asked council to approve a similar block party just days before election, the election day, and predictably, the council did so. They said then it was not political, as they do now, but is it truly a coincidence that out of 52 weeks of the year, both of these proposed dates just happened to be scheduled right before election day? Now, for those who may not know, this neighborhood has a significant concentration of city officials and volunteers. It's home to the mayor, one councilman, one PNZ board member, one MDD board member, a former councilman who was on council for over two decades, along with a few civic club members. So here we are in the fall, and on the Sunday before the November election, this same group wants to hold another block party, and they're asking for city police to be diverted for four hours so they can host this, quote, "non-political" event. Now, the city has spent millions of dollars to improve a large city park that's within walking distance of Silverwood. Council should simply deny this request and ask them to utilize existing facilities. As a city taxpayer, I object to using the city's police department to repeatedly show favoritism to one neighborhood over all the others. There was no precedent for granting the first request, and approving the second one is actually going to set bad precedent for the future. Now, if the council is determined to approve it, then they should require the date to be changed until after the election and require the organizers to pay all costs associated with providing police for this event. This is only fair, and I think the vast majority of the city's other residents would agree. Now, since I have a minute, I'm going to address what Mr. Ballmer spoke about in his article, and he was referring to the Sentinel, where we talked about the board approval appointment process. And what he missed, yes, we pointed out, this ordinance has been around for almost 10 years, but what people need to recognize is that during an election cycle, you will hear this over and over. It wasn't just with me, it was with other people. You need to be on the PNZ board, or you need to be on MDD. Well, how do you get those appointments? They're clearly nominated by two individuals, the mayor or the PNZ head, and so the point is, how can you get the experience, run for office, if the appointment process is tightly controlled? And yes, I recognize some of the names that signed off on this, and they had their reasons, but I'm saying that now this is being used as a weapon to keep people from running for office, and that's not right. Thank you.
All right, let me move on to item number six, Presentation of the LE COP Awards. Chief?
This presentation is going to be performed by Chief Gentry. I wish I had a bio on him, but that would take probably the remainder of the night with his background. He's had 45 years of law enforcement experience. He's been a chief for over 26 years. If you're in law enforcement and you're in leadership, if you don't know Mike Gentry, then you just don't know. He has an incredible background, so.
You'd think I'd be taller. Chief Dunlap said. Thank you, Mayor, Council, city staff, citizens. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight. This is an honor. On my part, I can't tell you enough how pleased I am to be here with you, to recognize two of your police department employees, as we have already done around the state. I am the Director of Training for the Texas Police Chiefs Association. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is the largest law enforcement executive association in Texas and certainly among the top five in the United States. Our association is very active, and you already, I know, are all aware of our association because of your accreditation program that your police department has already earned and continues to earn throughout its routine operations. The Texas Police Chiefs Association has over 1,800 members, and throughout the development of our various programs, we have tried our best to provide support to agencies such as yours and all across the state so as to provide roadmaps and abilities to maximize the capability of your law enforcement functions. Among these, we have the LE COP program. That's an acronym, stands for the Law Enforcement Command Officer Program. About two years ago, we determined that we wanted to start a program that is a little bit of a parallel to the accreditation program that the department already enjoys, really more geared for the development of individual command-level officers. As a result of that, we established a series of training courses that address a number of issues. The backbone of the program is the West Point Leadership Model that many of you are familiar with, a three-week-long leadership development course. And then we've augmented that with the addition of a number of courses that are strictly for specific assignments, leadership in those roles. So you'll have a managing patrol operations course, a managing criminal investigations, et cetera. There's about 16 of those courses that exist. About two years ago, we decided that we wanted to recognize those individuals in the state who were working hard to train themselves, to prepare themselves for promotion within their law enforcement agencies, and that was the genesis of the LE COP Law Enforcement Command Officer Program. Started about two years ago, and of course, there's a reaction time wherein people needed to be able to attend those classes. We have about 60 classes scheduled around the state of Texas every year. City of Shenandoah has been extremely supportive, early adopters of the program, and hosts even the classes here periodically throughout the course of the year. And so in July of this year, our first awardee, by the way, was in October of last year. Took a little while for people to get caught up in the program, and it took a while to touch those benchmarks in order to be qualified for it. In July of this year, Lieutenant Reivers, Jake Reivers, and now Lieutenant Josh Gordon managed to earn that recognition, and we provided them with their awards. But unfortunately, and my deepest apologies, my timing for being able to be here and address you formally was put off by a number of events that caused me to be tardy, but finally, I'm here. And I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize these two individuals who have exemplified an extraordinary effort to develop themselves to better serve the citizens of the city of Shenandoah and of this state. These two individuals were exemplary in their attendance at these classes, recognized around the state and all their classmates as being well above their peers in their abilities and their knowledge and their determination to do a good job for this city and for our profession. And I could not be more proud to have Joel and Jake recognized tonight. These individuals were benefit to the classes they attended. They were engaged and interested and exceedingly engaged in learning and in participating in the program. And as a result of that, they were the 11th and 12th officers in the state of Texas to so earn this award.
Awesome.
That's a very early adopters due to the extraordinary leadership of Chief Troy Dunlap and this organization. They were allowed to do that, and they are number 11 and 12 in the state of Texas. Just to keep you apprised of the progress here, and since they received their awards a mere three months ago, we are now at 27 people in the state of Texas who have achieved this. 24 are published, 23 are published. There are four more that will be published shortly who have already completed the program. I also wanted you to know that these funds that are expended for these individuals to attend these classes all go to one specific cause, and that is the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation. The foundation exists to provide a line-of-duty death benefit to officers in the state of Texas who were killed doing their jobs. It is a terrible honor to be able to provide this resource to these families who have suffered such tremendous loss. We, as chiefs, understand that when a police officer dies in the line of duty, the families will reap benefits, financial benefits, over time, but they're delayed. It takes some time for them to be able to attain those things. Our policy is we respond within 24 hours to that family without press, without any kind of coverage, and we deliver a check for $10,000, and we tell that family that we care about them and are concerned about them, and then we disappear. We do that with no effort to be recognized. We don't use the press. No one knows we do it, and yet, we've been doing it almost 20 years. It is for this reason that I am such an advocate and a proponent of our training programs. Not only do we provide outstanding training to outstanding individuals such as Joel and Jake, but we do it for a very good reason. And so for that reason, I will not apologize for advertising our programs and doing our best to make them available to as many people in the state who would want them. So to the city of Shenandoah, to Chief Dunlap, and specifically to Joel and Jake, I give you my congratulations and my thanks for your support of our programs and their willingness to participate. They deserve every bit of the recognition that we will give them tonight as they are prepared and trained to serve in whatever role you assign them as law enforcement command officers in the state of Texas. Could I ask these two to come forward? Joel, I'm going to provide you with yours first, because you were numerically by a narrow margin the first of the two of you to receive the award, number 11, recognized in the state of Texas. I'm proud of you, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Jake? Number 12. You likewise have well earned this. It is not easy to attain this recognition, and we're so proud of you. We're proud of the city of Shenandoah, and we thank you for your participation, and you are well qualified, and I'm proud to be your friend.
Thank you, Chief. High praise indeed. We are extremely proud of our police officers here in Shenandoah. Thank you for your presentation. All right, item number seven, Presentation of the Monthly MDD Report.
Thanks, Janet. As you can see, we've got six new projects on slate for the MDD this year. All of them are scheduled to complete this year with the exception of the redevelopment zone, which will probably run into multi-years. Update, September, MDD did not meet, but at this last meeting, we did welcome Dr. Jim Wallace to the board, and we are certainly glad to have him with us. Looking down the projects, if you haven't taken a stroll past the Vision Park Pond, and you didn't notice that the excavation has started, so that project is underway. Likewise, we've got our toddler park parking bidding coming up, and that'll be in November, so we're looking forward to that. We have one ACP waterline project complete as well, so that was another good project done. And David Memorial, we did approve the clearing and grubbing prior meeting, and we are expecting that to be under construction in February of '23. So that is the update for the MDD today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, item number eight, Presentation of the Annual Pool Report.
Always good to have Woody here.
No jokes. Hi, guys. I'd like to start off by saying a big thank you to Susie Mason and Leslie Stevens, who have done a lot of the hard hitting the last few months. Of course, the guards are always working hard, but without Leslie and Susie picking up a lot of the slack, it would have been a real sloppy year. And do I have any questions I can try to field for you?
Do you think, how's the pool chiller, the spray thing, is that working now?
Yes, we had ended up, it was a bad motor, or the motor was, I'm not an electrician, the motor was kicking the breakers, whatever that means. And so we got a new motor, and we got a whole new unit. And so now we have spare parts, because the other parts, I know every piece of it.
So we think that's going to help. I know as the weather heats up, the pool tends to get basically like bathwater, and that, I think, you and I have talked, I think that's probably what leads to a little bit of a decline in those later months.
That and vacations. As soon as the shark's season over, a lot of the families that are in this area take a quick vacation in between schools starting. And with school starting in August so early, it limits the window.
Cool. That was it. Thanks. Thank you again for an awesome job in running the pool. It's always amazing, and I just, I appreciate your constant dedication and oversight for keeping that pool running.
You're welcome. It looks different now with the rock wall. If you go past now, the rock wall is sitting in front of the shark garage door. I don't know how the guys moved it, but that's where we had to put it, so.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
No problem. Have Woody.
All right, moving on to item number nine, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Closure of Silverwood Ranch Drive for a Block Party.
Mayor and Council, you saw this item earlier in the year. For clarification, the police are not going to be stationed at this event the entire time. I would, Chief Dunlap might correct me, but I'm going to guess that their total time involved is maybe five minutes, because the city's closing the street as directed by council. If you vote to do this, we place barricades at that one entry. I also, last time, contacted Woodlands Fire as a courtesy to let them know that that entry would be closed for a few hours, the other one would still be open, so that it would have total access. The city's not putting any funds into this. This is strictly a resident effort. The work, the setup, the cost is all provided by the residents. And as far as the timing, Mr. Wallace is here from Silverwood. He's one of the residents involved who contacted me. If I had to guess, I would say that the timing is based around pleasant weather, April, November, not too hot, not too cold, maybe not too rainy yet. But he might be able to enlighten me on other reasons. And if you have questions, Mr. Wallace is here to answer them for you.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Wallace?
Can I speak for a second?
Sure, sure. Come on up.
I'm amazed that a simple request for citizens to get together and get to know their neighbors becomes controversial, but the organizing group that did it last time got together. This is strictly made up of local citizens. The only real change from last time is that we're including the Estates area, because some of the people last time said, can we come? And so we're including that. It only takes five minutes for them to set up the barrier, because I was there last time when the barrier was set up and actually helped the policeman do it. Took five minutes, and it's right in front of my house. And then we took the barrier down ourselves and laid it in the grass beside the road, and they said, well, we'll pick it up when we come by later on. And they picked it up the next day. So I don't think any special trip was made to do that. The selection of the date had to do with one thing in particular. It was not the election, because the election is state and federal. It's not city. It had to do with the World Series, and this is the first Sunday after the World Series is over that we could safely have it, and that's the date that the residents picked. And so there's no cost to the city. Neighbors get together. They get to know each other. There's no politicking, and I hope that you'll approve it. Thanks.
And if I could add, any other neighborhood that asked council to do this would be considered equally. equally.
Motion to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve the request by Councilman Brott and seconded by Councilman Pollard. We have any discussion?
Yeah, so one issue that I have and kind of last time, kind of let it roll is, this is, we're back to having the last second stuff. So I ask you if, and really for any other neighbors, if you want to plan this, do some forward looking because right now, it's, we approve it or it doesn't happen. And that's basically to give everybody some extra notice that this is something that you want to do is something that I'd really ask for anybody who would like to do this, kind of give everybody some chance to take a look at it and put it out there. That would be the one thing that I would suggest is we, you know, this should have happened maybe back in September, late September meeting a month ago, so we know, we kind of plan around what's going on to make sure everybody's notified that needs to be notified, et cetera, et cetera. So I do appreciate that we're not, we are not spending city resources. We do have a separate entrance. Some streets, like the one I live on, would really not be amenable to this because of the traffic flow. So this is a good location right there on that end. But yeah, I would like some additional, some, ask for it earlier.
Any additional comments? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and possible action to authorize purchases from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Mayor and councils, you'll see in the agenda pack is a request for equipment replacement purchases. Community Development is asking for a 2022 Chevrolet Colorado to replace the current code enforcement Tahoe that was discussed during budget workshop. The Colorado was more price effective, so Jackie opted to go with that vehicle. You'll notice there's a vehicle cost, some striping and some light costs for that. And then the police department was able to secure a very good price on a new Malibu to replace the current Malibu that's having some issues. So we decided to jump on that opportunity, especially with the cost of vehicles going on right now. So that would be $21,000. That car is not striped and it doesn't have lights in it, so there's no additional cost on top of that. And then finally, the final purchase of the replacement police vests is included here as well. We waited until this year, till the funds replenished a little bit, to order the last track of vests. And those are those angel armor vests that eliminate the need for two separate vests. It's a high-impact and low-impact vest all in one. So that is the final replacement on those. And then the Tahoe, the code enforcement Tahoe and the Chevy Malibu will be put onto GOV deals and any money that is recouped from that will go back towards the replacement in this fund. So. And that's it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Motion.
Motion to approve the purchases from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Second.
Motion to approve purchases from the Equipment Fund by Councilman Ray Maker, seconded by Councilman McLeod. Any discussion?
Jackie, is this, so one concern we talked about with, in the past, not recently, but in the past, with the code enforcement vehicles, is this gonna be a four-by-four?
No, sir.
So we're not considering the fact that we may want to access muddy sites or what was the thought behind a truck as opposed, you know, we went from the little, thinking of car and then big truck and then Tahoe and...
Correct. So there are instances where staff does need to jump curbs within right-of-way or potentially block traffic momentarily to either pull signs or pick something that's obstructing the area. And so we looked at some other SUV options and as well as the typical 1500, which is what the building official farm marshal have similarly.
Right.
And this was, the Colorado was a little bit more suited, it's a smaller truck, but still gives her the versatility to jump curbs and enter job sites should she need to.
Okay. Yeah, that was what I was asking. So we don't need the four-by-four capability for that? Okay.
No, sir.
And then my next question or point or whatever, I realize it's a pool car and we don't need police lights on it, but I would like some Shenandoah branding on there. I'm assuming that's gonna come?
It will.
Okay.
Sure. Yes, this is just the pool car, it's nothing that...
Oh, I understand. It just belongs to the city and if you're in it, you're representing the city, so it doesn't need all the fancy lights, obviously, but yeah.
I know the Expedition that's over here has branding and I think one of the Malibus did and I think it came off over time, but...
So we had two, one, both of them were used for travel and training for a while and I think one was transferred to the administration and when we did that, that's when we put it into, with the markings on it. The reason why we don't have the markings on it now currently is because we use it for undercover sometimes if we're working any type of things with DPS in Montgomery County like we do. So that was the reason why we don't mark those particular cars.
So you're not gonna be marking this car?
No, sir.
It's a pool car, it's gonna be a police car.
No, it's a car we use for travel and training, but then we also use these vehicles for, if we need to do surveillance or wear assistance DPS with some of the stings that we've done and also with Montgomery County, this is the vehicle we usually use when we set up on cars or something or if we do a burglary sting, this is usually the car we use.
And we've got the GPS tracking on this and we keep track of mileage for when it's used for travel and training versus when it's used for police work?
We do have, it is, does have a GPS tracker on it.
Okay. And we've, from billing purposes...
Yes, typically when anyone goes to travel and training, they write down the beginning odometer and the end of the odometer and then gas receipts goes towards travel and training.
Okay.
Any more discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action regarding city entrance sign design.
Mayor and council, staff reached out and sought a proposal from Landology for the design work on these signs. The reason we did so is Landology has done the design work for entrance signs at Vision Park, Shenandoah, Savannah, Holly Hill, Six Pines. And so we wanted to stick with, stay with Landology to keep consistency between the signs. They do understand that this will be, need to be a larger and more present since it's gonna be on the feeder. And the price for the design work came in just under budget. We budgeted $30,000 and their proposal came in at $28,000. So staff is recommending awarding those design services to Landology.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Ray Maker. Any discussion?
Yes. Joseph, I understand that we have two signs budgeted and that's what you're having the design work done on. I had two things I thought about. One, on the design of the signs, can we do something to point out that we prosecute criminals? Can we put something on that sign?
We proudly fund our police department.
If council, yes, has some ideas of what they'd like to add, definitely let me know now.
Yeah.
Because I can let Jonathan with Landology know and he can work that into the design.
We definitely, you know, you tell them to have a strip across the bottom. I think a positive way to say is, we proudly fund our police department. You know, obviously, whatever that detail can be tweaked, but the point is to put something underneath there that would...
A positive indication that our police are well and strong in this city?
Yeah.
Very, very strong.
Let me take it one step further. Could we have something that we could change? So in other words, if you wanted to say something...
A variable message sign?
It's just a question now.
I believe, I can double check, but I believe, so we do have to comply with, since it is in text, not right-of-way, they have standards that we have to comply with.
I understand that.
It's been almost a year since I've looked at those, but I believe they do not allow a changing message sign on one. I can double check.
Fair enough.
Or it could be one of these that, you know, we could change the message, but it's, in other words, so whatever we put down there could be changed later without destroying the whole sign. Maybe you approach it that way.
Right, rather than a digital...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be digital, just it's changeable in the future if we decide this is a...
It doesn't have to flash a new message every minute.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's not what we're talking, yeah.
One other idea, in talking to the police chief, he believes that if we had more signs, it would help keep criminals out. If we would have another sign, I know we budgeted for two, we have one northbound and one southbound, I would suggest that we consider adding another, a third sign as people coming from Harris County or exiting at Home Depot in Portofino, where we have an awful lot of crime, a lot of our expenditures are put into that area. I would like to consider another sign there. And what would it be and what would it cost to add it?
So what I use for the cost estimate, without having any design to look at, during the budget workshop, we just picked $100,000 per sign, realizing that could go either direction. So you could use that number if you wanted to add additional signs.
And we're saving on the latest project that you got money back, we're saving about $300,000 that we have in the budget now.
So with the...
From last week.
Well, we've been saving on several projects, which one? I like being able to say that, by the way.
Yeah, you saved $300,000 on the design for the research I-45.
Oh, yes. Yes, it'll potentially be a reimbursement that we'll be asking the county for. Now, the MDD did save on the Vision Park excavation. That project came in about $650,000 under budget. So that was a large chunk of money going back into MDD's budget.
So maybe we should think in terms of more signs instead of just one extra sign. We have the money.
Certainly, MDD would entertain listening, so.
Yeah, that's, MDD's funding these, so yeah, it's...
Thank you.
I think once we get the design, I mean, if we're gonna use the same scale, same sign, it's something that could be dropped. So certainly as we get these two done and rolled out, I think we're totally, totally open to other places and you pointed out a good area that might be useful for that. Not sure where we would put it, but...
We look at areas to put it, but the idea is with the design, that would be your sign that you could place it, any location.
How long do they think it'll take to get us the design and ballpark?
It's gonna probably be, we'll meet with them typically, you know, four or five times. So it's gonna be a few months for them to get some input from staff, to get some of these ideas, I'll relay these, and then they'll come up with some sketches and, you know, I always have Jonathan wow me with something new. I want to see something new and, so it'll be a few months.
Right. Just wanted to know if I was gonna maybe have any additions to the MDD report.
Anything else? Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, discussion and possible action to approve a contract for the pool rehabilitation project.
Yes, mayor and council, so before you, you have a contract from the Texas Pool Experts or Beyond Blue Pools, and this is for the deck rehabilitation over at the pool. They will be repairing some of the cracked and damaged areas, texturing some areas that have worn thin, and then applying a uniform coat of paint to get the aesthetics looking up. This is not a complete replacement, but it is rehabilitation of the existing deck. They originally had priced us $33,000 and some change. As we're getting other prices from other bidders, we negotiated them down to $29,998 and they are the low bidder and Beyond Blue Pools is who staff is recommending to complete this project.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Ray Maker. Discussion?
I personally walked that pool, that pool area and stumped my toe on those areas that need repair. Woody is a good salesperson because she makes sure that I walked away from there knowing these repairs absolutely had to be made, so I'm all for it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration and possible action to approve a preliminary plat for Adriatic Cafe.
Mayor and council, before you for consideration is the preliminary plat for the 2.203 acres that is going to be developed for the Adriatic Cafe. The property is situated along I-45 and the property has also been granted a variance to the lot frontage and the vegetation buffer along the north, which this plat complies with. Staff, along with ball engineering, has reviewed and approved this plat and recommends the approval of the preliminary plat, along with planning and zoning after their consideration last week.
Jackie, does this plat have that information on it of the variance?
It does. It shows the lot depth and then identifies the 10-foot vegetation line there.
Got you. Thank you.
And I know they were still planning to do the pass-through into the Sam Moon parking lot.
Yes, so they have come to agreement with the other property owner to get that connection made and prevent tearing up the front portion of the Sam Moon.
No.
Thank you, Joseph, for negotiating that among the owner and the center. I know that was a lot of hard work and you're pretty proud of it and we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, we have a motion.
A motion, do we approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman McLeod. All right. Additional discussion? Done? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, presentation of a P&amp;Z preliminary report regarding special use permit for wine and malt beverage retail on premises, permit for Crawfish Cafe located at 8850 Metro Park Drive.
Make a motion to approve?
I think I lost my batteries over there. Crawfish Cafe located in the Metro Park Center at 8850 Suite 100 has requested a wine and malt beverage on-premise permit for consideration. The permit does not include, or the application from Crawfish Cafe does not include late hours. They indicated in their application that they operate Monday through Friday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM noon. The Planning and Zoning Commission also reviewed this agenda item during their meeting last week and recommends approval of the use permit.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. We're gonna move on to the public hearing regarding the proposed special use permit for wine and malt beverage retail permit. The public meeting begins now at 7:49. for wine and malt beverage retail permit. The public meeting begins now at seven forty-nine. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Having no one, uh, speaking on this item, we close the public hearing at seven fifty. Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. In honor to the City of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, chapter one oh two, granting a special use permit for wine and malt beverage, on premise permit for Crawfish Cafe located at eighty-eight fifty Metro Park Drive, Suite one hundred, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of two thousand dollars for violations thereof, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? Has anyone been to Crawfish Cafe? I have yet to try it.
I'm planning to.
It's great.
I see, I see heads nodding, so I...
It's great, and they just were announced, um, October fourteenth, the Eastern Press named them as best crawfish in Houston.
Really?
So, in a town this big, could this be the dining seat? It's a pretty great little poodle.
Well, the test is when I go there to eat, 'cause I, having spent a lot of time in, in, in New Orleans, in Louisiana, I've become a, a, a pretty good critic of Louisiana food.
It is also really interesting, they have a Cajun, Asian fusion.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah.
So, so that's a really nice side to eat and have the traditional.
That's a double treat, then, yeah. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number seventeen, presentation of a Planning and Zoning Commission preliminary report regarding a variance to City of Shenandoah zoning ordinance allowing for encroachment of pool equipment within the side of building setback with one-three-six McKinley Landing Lane.
Uh, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, the property owner located at the address listed in the agenda pack, um, is requesting a variance to, uh, the building, the building line that exists on the, uh, side yard. They would like to place pool equipment, uh, within that four-foot, uh, setback. The application for the variance allows, um, the need to eliminate some mature trees and that are currently existing in the backyard, lay additional electrical lines there, and then reduce the green space, um, of, of that home. The Planning and Zoning Commission did also review this at their meeting last week, and they recommend approval of the variance application.
Thank you, Jackie. We're gonna move on to item number eighteen, a public hearing regarding a variance to the City of Shenandoah zoning ordinance allowing for encroachment of pool equipment within the side building setback. Uh, public hearing begins at seven fifty-three. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Having no one, uh, speaking on this item, we're gonna close the, uh, public hearing at seven fifty-four PM. Item number nineteen, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. In honor to the City of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, chapter one oh two, to approve a variance to the City of Shenandoah zoning ordinance providing for encroachment of pool equipment into a side building setback line for one-three-six McKinley Landing Lane, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of two thousand dollars for violations thereof, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Ray Maker. Any discussion on the side of it?
Got a couple things. So, to be clear, there's no easements or, or any other restrictions on this, right?
On the side yard?
On the side yard.
There, uh, there, there's like drainage pumps that run through there, but the drainage is already captured, um, and that area was in rubble, so that's, that's a non-issue.
Okay. Uh, next question is, I noticed in that same area, there's an air conditioning unit there, the compressor, is that not included in a bill down?
The, uh, the P and D language allows for the HGAC.
Okay.
But it excludes any other equipment generator pool.
Um, do they, they know what pool equipment they're talking about? Just pumps, heaters?
Yes, they're like, it's a little, uh, concrete pad with a pool.
Yeah, I mean, I wa, I was concerned, we talked the other day about, uh, the noise, well, they've already got an AC compressor sitting there that's gonna make, as much or not, more noise than a, than a pool pump, so...
And it's not much of a distance to the corner of the lot either, so...
Yeah, I mean, that, generally speaking, and, and this is something maybe we should, should start looking at as, as a general case, um, um, you know, kind of, if, if, if these conditions are met, if there's already an AC unit there, you know, some, maybe there's some things that we could simplify this instead of having come back every single time. I don't mind looking at it, obviously, it's part of my job, but if, if there's a way we could simplify some things, when it's kinda clear cut, if there's already equipment occupying that space, maybe there's some, there's some thought that we could take about...
Planning and zoning is working on the IDC amendment for that.
Very likely, okay.
You know, I did see that, uh, y'all are using Premier Pools, that they, they did my pool. I'm sure eleven years from now, you're gonna be happy with it.
Any additional discussion on the side of it? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number twenty, discussion and possible action to adopt the following resolution. A resolution setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing under proposed annexation of certain property by the City of Shenandoah, Texas, and authorizing and directing the mayor to publish notice of such public hearing.
Council, this is the three pieces of property owned by the city, it, basically, uh, uh, in the Tamina area. Uh, tonight is simply a motion to set the date, time, and place for a public hearing, so there will be a public hearing on this matter, and not a vote tonight, a vote then. We're suggesting the next meeting, which is November the sixteenth, uh, at seven o'clock, at City Council meeting.
Good, I'm making a motion to approve?
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? Just so there's no misunderstanding, this is setting up the...
Yes, there's, we're not approving annexation tonight, we're setting a time for a public hearing.
There'll be plenty of maps to look at next time.
Yes.
Thank you for the clar, clarification. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number twenty-one, discussion and possible action to adopt the minutes of the August twenty-fourth, September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, regular meetings.
Motion to, all three be approved is read?
Motion to approve, all three is read, by Councilman Bratt, and seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Pollard. Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for September twenty-twenty-two. Motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Ray Maker? Seconded. Seconded by Councilman Bratt? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. All right, moving on to item number twenty-three, Civic Club Updates.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for having the Civic Club up to do, uh, update in this meeting. Uh, I wanted to kinda just go back over a couple things that we, we did just over the last couple of weeks. We had the October fourteenth stadium night, the October fifteenth garage sale, uh, both of those were fantastic. Uh, in fact, Sunningdale, I had a, uh, craft show that day, so it was, uh, very beneficial for them as, as well. Uh, we just had our trash patch, uh, this last Saturday. The Neighbors Helping Neighbors group, uh, participated in that to help, uh, folks bring some of their things over. It was, I think, a huge success, so I will plan on continuing that as we go through our, our future, uh, trash patches. Um, next Monday is Halloween. I'm excited to see the cities passing out candy in our community during the parade. If the Civic Club can be of any assistance during that, um, please reach out, and we'd be happy to do so. Um, we are, we, excuse me, I have been posting on the, uh, Shenandoah Facebook groups, uh, just kinda collecting addresses for folks to do the trick or treating next week, so, uh, hopefully that'll be a benefit for the parents looking for places for their trick or treaters. Uh, at this point, there's at least already like twenty people that have signed up, so that's an awesome sign. Uh, so, next big upcoming thing is that we've got going on, November twenty-ninth, Lighting of the Angels. If you don't know already, it is our twenty-fifth anniversary of Lighting of the Angels. Um, so, I, because of that, I wanna highlight a couple things. Uh, you know, we've always had Santa, snow slide, DJ Gordy, snow machines, uh, we are gonna bring back the magic show, uh, there's gonna be camel rides, uh, we're gonna actually do some movies to go along with that, so that people that are standing in line, uh, have something to look at while they're waiting to ride the, uh, the camels. Uh, petting zoos, ponies, mechanical reindeer, Grinch, Angel on stilts, uh, frosty reindeer characters, balloon artists, juggling elves, uh, Mrs. Foss making s'mores. Now, just a few of the things that we're doing. Uh, even despite doing all of those things to kinda make our twenty-fifth, uh, Lighting of the Angels even more special, we are on budget, which is awesome. Uh, setup for all of those folks that may be watching, uh, this from the outside, we will also publish in, on Facebook groups, uh, setup will be on Monday, November the twenty-nineth, the twenty-eighth, uh, excuse me, the actual, uh, Lighting of the Angels is on the twenty-ninth, but setup will be on that Monday. We'd love to have residents come out and participate. This is not a, if you sign up, you have to come first thing in the morning and work until we shut everything down at the end of the day. Uh, we, even if you come out for half hour, an hour, a couple hours, whatever that time may be, uh, we'd love for you to come out and, and just be a part of it, if nothing else, even just come out and socialize with, uh, the folks that are there. The Civic Club is very welcoming to everybody, uh, and so we encourage you to come out and help us with that. Uh, and then because we won't have that second, uh, Civic Club meeting in, um, in November, uh, actually, City Council meeting, um, I'm also gonna mention that our, our luminary prep day, uh, where we meet over in the municipal garages, uh, we're going to be, uh, doing that on December the tenth. So the supplies will be available that day for folks to come up and get their, uh, luminary stuff ready. Uh, we'll also, as usual, be making all of the extra ones for next year, as well as all the entrances, um, and that's the, that, one of those, uh, that particular day, as well as, uh, the evening of the lighting of the luminaries, which will be on Christmas Eve night. Um, those we have commitment from local Boy Scout groups to assist with those as well. And that's it, any questions?
Great update, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item twenty-four, City Attorney Update.
Yes, I've got one tonight. The city, uh, was sued by a non-resident, Frank Powell. Uh, he's been, uh, attended meetings before. Uh, in the lawsuit, he asked for a temporary restraining order against the city, he asked for a temporary injunction against the city, and he asked for a permanent injunction against the city. The temporary restraining order, uh, was denied by Judge Bays a couple of weeks ago. There was a hearing last Friday. Uh, Gary Watts testified, and Frank Powell testified at that hearing. The court has denied, uh, Frank Powell's request for a temporary restraining order. The court has denied Frank Powell's request for a permanent injunction, and a temporary injunction. And so, uh, what the court still has left to discuss is whether or not, uh, the court, the city will be awarded attorney fees. That's all.
Thank you. So, just, just to clear that up, the, the crux of the, of the suit has been already adjudicated by the judge.
Correct.
So there's no continuance, there's no trial date set, or anything like that?
The only thing left to determine right now is the city, whether the cer, city is awarded its attorney fees.
Thank you.
Well, I sure hope that happens. Bill, you're batting a thousand, so great.
Good work. The only reason I ask that is that I saw something on, on social media that, uh, didn't exactly state what you just stated.
Probably by non-lawyers.
Item, sorry?
Or by non-journalists?
Let's not go there. Item number twenty-five, City Administrator Updates.
Council, I've got several for you tonight. Um, first of all, I wanna highlight some of our bigger projects that we've been working on for some time. Uh, first of which is David Memorial. As you all know, this project has years invested in it. Uh, the township recently authorized five hundred thousand dollars in funding through a regional partnership agreement that supports projects in South Montgomery County. The City of Conroe has included the remaining funds for the Conroe section of the project in their CIP budget. At the next County Commissioners Court meeting, we've been told that this item is on their agenda to consider the remaining funds needed for the county section, so this would put us where we need to be to get this project done. So, we're, we're optimistic, uh, about County, uh, County Commissioners Court, uh, on the next agenda. Uh, this is very exciting news, uh, long time coming, so we've overcome a lot of obstacles. Uh, it's been just a constant effort, so this is very exciting. Secondly, the I forty-five Research Forest intersection, uh, you all may be aware already that, uh, Commissioners Court approved five million dollars in funding, these are pass-through funds recently, uh, for the major improvements at the intersection, and this will aid traffic flow, much-needed improvements. And then the Research Grogan's, uh, intersection improvements, Commissioner Riley is gonna kick that off early November is the, is the target date, so these are all, all very good news, very big projects that we've been working toward. And, um, there are others in progress, which we hope to be able to discuss soon. Um, I wanna take a minute, though, to thank people who have been instrumental in these big projects, who have been the most hands-on, and I, I don't mean to overlook anybody, but, um, I'm gonna first thank Blile Engineering. Uh, they have been fully committed to these projects. Uh, it would've been easy to say, especially something like David Memorial, that it's a headache, you know, why, why keep pushing it, but they have never stopped pushing it. Um, and I also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Farabee, the City Attorney, very involved as well, guided us through a lot of legal matters through these projects. Um, Joseph and Rual, of course, very hands-on in these projects. Uh, we have regular project meetings, and we, it's an opportunity to stay up-to-date on progress, on the details, on anything that needs to be adjusted to try to move this forward. Um, Joseph and Rual and their team. Uh, Lisa has been a big part of, you know, advising us on the finance side of these projects, keeping track of things. Uh, I wanna thank former Mayor Wheeler. He has still, uh, stayed involved in some of these projects because they, they have been very important for a long time, and he has, um, leveraged his very, uh, vital relationships that, that he has had. Um, Mayor Escado got involved as soon as he took his seat, and, uh, from the word go, has been a big part of these discussions. Commissioner Riley has been a big champion of our projects, and, uh, and we look forward to his continued, um, support. And, uh, last but not least, uh, State Council, your support all along with this, uh, phenomenal, and also, of course, MDD for continued support and funding of a lot of these projects. So, uh, this is exci, an exciting time, a lot of big things are gonna be happening, so I, I, I look forward to that. It's been my privilege to work with, uh, smart and amazing and creative people in this long process. Um, I'm gonna move on to, uh, John Mayner, our CDB Director. Uh, had the opportunity to participate in the HGAC Rural Towns and Downtown Revitalization Panel earlier this week. in the H G A C Rural Towns and Downtown Revitalization Panel earlier this week, he was invited by some industry leaders during this panel, to join them for lunch, and some more discussions about what's going on in the industry, and various other very relevant topics. And then today, he participated in a Between the Trees interview with J.J. Holly, the Chamber President, so these are all great opportunities for positive exposure for the city, as well as our region, very important partnerships that John has, has developed. Moving on to Trash Bash, Mr. Ballmer already filled you in on a lot of this, but we had the Trash Bash last Saturday, we had 160 vehicles, and all five dumpsters were, were full by the end of the day, so big turnout, very successful event, and I want to thank Mr. Ballmer for, and his group, for assisting the residents who were unable to get their items to the Trash Bash by themselves, that's a, a huge help. And then finally, the Halloween Parade next Monday night, 5 to 8 PM, and let me clarify that trick-or-treating in the neighborhoods has always been allowed, and will continue to be allowed, and I want to thank also Mr. Ballmer, as he mentioned, for helping to coordinate on social media the residents who want to participate, who, who want to be on that list, so good news all the way around, and that's all I have.
Yes.
Thanks, Kevin.
I just have a question for Mr. Blile, could you give us a, an approximate timeline on these, on the major projects, that, that we've got the good, good news on, like I-45 Research and David Memorial?
Okay, I-45 and Research, the design is complete, we're looking at making some revisions at the county's request, Commissioner Riley will be running the project, we just got traffic counts in today, actually, along Research, along the corridor leading up to the intersection, so the A F A agreement needs to be done by the county, that's the funding agreement with the text doc, so probably won't be in construction until the summer, summertime. And then David Memorial, as you know, counsel, you awarded the clearing grubbing contract, that should be done no later than February 1st, starting February 1st, as soon as we have access to the right-of-way after the condemnation is complete. Once the construction gets started on the roadway itself, it's probably a 12-month project, that's what I reported to M D D, and Ruall fussed at me, he says that's too fast, and, but, and he may be right, but, so if we start construction in spring, March or so, it'd be, it'll be the next spring, 2024, before we will complete the roadway, and that, of course, goes all the way to 242. What's the other project that you reported on?
Research and Grogans?
Yeah, Research and Grogans, yes, that's a county project, completely funded by Precinct 2, and like Kathy said, that should start first part of November, there's some utility locates I saw over there, and the plan, we did the plans, they're complete, it won't take them long, maybe by the end of the year, if the weather cooperates, that's probably too short, right, Ruall?
I do think it is.
First part of the next year. Any other questions on any of the projects?
Anybody have any questions?
I, I can't wait for the ribbon cutting for David Memorial.
Yes, we'll all be there, I hope, so, one thing that, when Kathy was talking about the township approving Conroe's request for the funding, they also approved Conroe's request to have the City of Shenandoah manage the project, so they had to ask for that and get that approved, so that was, that was also good news, coming from the township.
Great news, thank you, I, I know this is a, this has been anticipated, eagerly awaited for, by not only our commercial partners, but our residents, not only in Shenandoah, but our surrounding communities. I know that, I've had discussions with the E D P and with the Chamber of Commerce, I know this is gonna stimulate a lot of the, the area, not only Shenandoah, but our surrounding neighborhoods, thank you.
A lot of good things will be happening in 2023, so it should be a good year.
Great news, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Council Inquiry.
Well, all, all that great news, all I can say is bravo, I mean, we've been looking forward to a lot of this stuff for a while, and y'all have done a lot of hard work to make it happen, a lot of dedication here with the staff, so, so proud of all of you for working on everything, and, you know, Kathy said, it's hard to thank everybody, but, you know, we do appreciate all the hard work that you do, in spite of a lot of rocks that get thrown at you, so, but I appreciate it, thanks a lot, guys.
I second that, incredible.
And I, I wish I could be here for Halloween, but I'm not gonna be here.
No, we'll, we'll miss you.
I second the kind words about our staff, and, and all of the people that Kathy mentioned, but the one person that she left out, of course, was herself, and we thank you, Kathy, for what you do, and the leadership that you provide to the city, thank you very, very much from all of us, we all feel it. I also wanted to mention that John Mayner didn't mention it, he did it in his notes, but I wanted you to know that this weekend, there is a grand opening of, is it, is it Dezo?
Dezo.
Dezo, and there is a family festival on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Metro Park, so encourage everybody to show up, there are ads on the internet from the various retailers that are there, so there are specials for everybody, including a pumpkin patch, so it would be nice for people to show up and support our new, new businesses there.
Thank you. Just want to echo up what they said, I won't say it again, but I echo all of their comments about staff, and Kathy, everything you said as well.
Yeah, so I, I want to reiterate something I said last meeting, again, we've talked with the chief, and reiterate again, if you're interested in hosting trick-or-treaters or offering that, please get on the social media pages, and contact Mr. Ballmer about getting your address listed. Again, we're not doing the official city safe streets, but we are, as promised by the chief, gonna have an extensive police presence throughout the neighborhood, and so you can expect, and if you don't, you can call me and I'll call him, you can expect to see a significant police presence throughout Halloween evening, and, but we are gonna ask that you kind of wrap it up by 9 o'clock, that's, that's a reasonable hour, it's a school night, that kind of lets us separate the, the kids who are having a good time, and, and the kids who may want to be causing issues, or maybe adults or whatever, so we're gonna kind of ask everybody to turn the lights off, and kind of shut it down about 9 o'clock, does that, does that seem right, chief?
That seems about appropriate.
Yeah, okay. And secondly, while we're on Halloween, I do want us to not forget, and we start talking, we've talked about putting the committee together to think about what to do next year, and I know what happens, 'cause I, I've lived through it for a couple of years, we, we do this, and then we get all busy with all the wonderful activities, and we do our Lighting of the Angels, and we do luminaries on Christmas, and now we're in New Year, and we kind of forget about it, it falls off the plate, so I do want us to, to keep in mind and start working on getting that, that committee of interested citizens together to think about, what are some different ways that we can celebrate Halloween with the specific, to me, the specific goal of bringing our neighbors and neighbors together. I think there's lots of cool ideas, we could issue passes and scans, and there's lots of ideas, but I don't want that to fall off the plate, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep bringing that up. So, that's really the, the two things that I was gonna talk about.
I also want to echo everything that's been said about all the participants in, in getting all these major projects moved along, it's, I know these projects started long before I became involved with, with the city, but it's, it's, it's rewarding to see that we have moved from, from just the, the discussion stage, and we're actually doing some proactive stuff, and actually putting, are about to put shovels into the ground to, to get these things started. Like I said before, this is gonna be beneficial to everyone in, in our area, and, and since we happen to be right smack in the middle of, of all the activity, I think that, that the team effort that has been exerted to get these things accomplished is, is worthy of, of appreciation, especially Blile Engineering with all the contacts with the county, I think that's, that's been essential, I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, having, we don't have an executive session tonight, so this session of the City Council meeting is adjourned at 8:19. Thank you all for coming.